We'll call to order the regular meeting of the Dambie Select Board for June 13th, 2024. And I would like you to please join me and rise.
For the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Abbott, Powers, Bullock.
Here.
Haynes.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Beth, would you please read the procedure for remote access participation?
Remote access to select board meetings while not required by law is offered in order to encourage access and participation for as many of our town's citizens as possible. It is understood that a select board meeting is a meeting open to the public but not a public meeting per se. Business is conducted and votes are cast by board members. Therefore, public attendees in person or remote who wish to comment on an agenda action item when it is addressed in the course of the meeting should indicate such intention during the public comment period at the beginning of the meeting. To maintain order as well as the efficiency of the meeting, the rules for remote attendee participation are: Remote attendees will be muted by online host upon joining the meeting, remaining so unless recognized to speak. Intention or desire to speak in order to comment or ask questions will be indicated by use of the hand raising function of the remote platform. People will be recognized in the order in which the hand raising function is activated. Online hosts will alert the chair to the presence of remote questions and/or comments. Remote participants, when recognized, will unmute their device and identify themselves with clearly spoken first and last name. Comment or question will be limited to two to three minutes, after which participant will be muted. This time limit will apply to in-person participants as well. General ground rules concerning decorum remain the same as that which is expected of citizens, guests, and board members attending in person. Namely, the speaker will not be interrupted and will not interrupt other speakers. The speaker will treat the proceedings and other speakers with dignity and respect, addressing the issue and not personalities. Procedures for use of the online platform and the above standards will be reviewed at the beginning of each meeting, which we have done. And our attendees so far online are Annette Smith and Lauren Dever.
Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome.
And clerk, have you noted who the...
Yes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to set the agenda.
Are you gonna add the new business?
Yes, I'm gonna add new business and I'm gonna make a change. So, the changes that I have are under Treasurers' Report. We are going to strike report on dump day because we don't have all those statistics yet. And we are going to replace that with the word designation. And then down under New Business, we are going to insert Primary Ballots. Is there any other changes?
Under New Business, you put Primary Ballots?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion that we set the agenda as you have just changed.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The agenda is set. So this is the time for members of the public to speak if they wish.
Here. I don't have any...
Nobody there?
I would like to have the Planning Commission report the letter grant first before the public comment. Is that possible?
There is a copy of the report right there, so you may read that, but this is the time for public comment.
Or indication of wanting to speak on an agenda action item? Is that an agenda action item?
Is this the letter that the Planning Commission sent to you guys?
Yes, and that's what we'll be discussing. Andrea, would you get Kenny an agenda there, please?
So, this last paragraph right here. I just want this board to know that there was citizens there that had serious concerns about this. There's nothing in this letter that tells you that, but there was discussion about it. At the Planning Commission meeting. I mean, this sounds pretty, you know, it's all hunky-dory as far as the townspeople are concerned, and maybe it's not.
So, having heard the concerns of the public that was at the hearing, this is the result that...
I know, but it sounds like... I don't know. We'll move on, I guess. Because we'll just go with it.
Did you wanna say what your concerns were?
You wanna do it here now? Yes.
Well, we're gonna do it here now, we're gonna do it... Because we're gonna have a hearing on this later.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's a hearing.
Not tonight.
Not tonight. There's gonna... But after we make it a first motion, one way or the other, then there'll be a hearing.
Right now, I do not want the pit too close to Easy Street.
Could you speak up so the remote people can hear you?
I do not want this pit closer to Easy Street. When Tommy blasts, it shakes the whole lower end of Easy Street. And he talked about the blasting and stuff and how it could be fixed and everything, but the pit's been there for a long time and everybody still has complaints about it. So I'm not so sure about that. But it's gonna depreciate. You guys think it's gonna...
I think this is for the hearing, isn't it? I mean, why are we doubling...
She has a right to speak and...
So we're gonna do it twice?
No, we're not gonna do it twice. But are you saying twice meaning down here? Are you saying twice meaning down here when we vote on the map change? She's expressing her interest on the map change that we're going to discuss.
Then there's a hearing.
Okay.
Well, that's months from now, but she's...
But this is a public comment period for whatever the public wants to comment on at the beginning of the meeting.
I just want...
And we do have three to five minutes, so I'm going to ask you to...
That there was concerns, public concerns about this. And as far as this goes, it just looks like everything is fine. There's no, you know, nothing for public health, safety, welfare, for the citizens of the town, but there is. So, that's my statement.
Thank you, Kim. Anybody else have public comment at this time? Any other public comment on remote? Okay. So, we will close the public comment time and I will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of the Select Board meeting of May 9th, 2024. Motion is made and seconded. Are there any corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the minutes of May 9th, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. The Rutland Regional Planning Commission was going to give us an update on the grant opportunity, and unfortunately, the grant opportunity was not awarded to Dambie or Mount Tabor. Only two towns in the area were awarded the grant opportunity. One was Benson and one was Paulette. So, I told Mr. Neary it was not necessary to come down here this evening.
So that was the one we were gonna use to try to do the study down there?
Yeah. Next on the agenda, we have Mike Abbott in regard to Holland Heights Road.
I'd like to entertain the idea of putting a culvert at the end of Holland Heights and Route 7, North Main Street. The amount of water that runs down from Scabuzzo, that ain't Scabuzzo's anymore, but that's who everybody here knows it as. The amount of water that runs from the crest of the hill there runs all the way down to Blacktop, everything off from multiple different driveways coming into the Blacktop and agenda comes right to the driveway beginning and ends up down in Rikens and actually funnels right down the road. I know the trees that are in there regulate the availability about putting in ditching. So, the water runs down the road and there's no big deal that you can... It can't be dealt with. We need to put a culvert in from the telephone pole across the front of Holland Heights to get the water off of Holland Heights. There's... It's been upwards of two years since I've seen a grader on the road because I've been taking care of it myself. But there is... There's a... I took a picture of it and I put a tape measure to it. There is a seven-inch channel that runs down the entrance of Holland Heights because all the water gets... It's pretty near 10 inches wide and seven inches deep and it goes pretty near 25 feet down into Holland Heights because the water just funnels right down into there. We need to put a culvert in. There's a telephone pole right there, I understand it, but we're all smart people, we can deal with the telephone pole and we can get a culvert in to get the water across the street into the hayfield.
No, that's not gonna bother where you're sawing your logs and stuff now, but that water all set.
No, I put a ditch in there this winter and took care of anything that's there now because all the water that comes off from the hill by my father's goes under the road and comes there already now. So, that's... I put a ditch in 150 feet this winter and took care of everything and shoot it out into the middle of the hayfield.
You see that bothering that meadow at all? That hayfield that's right there?
You already got one culvert dumping in there.
Right, no, I didn't know, you know, how much is coming off that other one.
It's always wet.
I mean, if there's no objection to...
No matter what, it's still better to put it into a hayfield than run it down the town road.
And all I'm doing is, was asking your brother if he thought that, I mean, because we don't care if we make the meadow wet. I mean, that's... Then you guys would have a wet meadow.
But that water's only gonna come in a rainstorm. Yeah, rainstorms, and that's what it does. And I actually had to put a thank you name in my driveway because it was going down my walkway. But now, since I've done that, two years ago, we had a big heavy washout and Larry came down and graded the road and actually tipped the road back the other way because they didn't have no materials, so we cut the road back the other way. So now it goes onto the neighbor's property, goes all the way down to Kenson, right down into Kenson driveway. So, it really is not that big of a deal to fix it, but it would be nice to see a grader on that road more than every two years. I'm the one that's taking care of it. You guys went by there with bush hog two weeks ago, nobody went down... There's bushes growing in, somebody could go down there with a weed bag or can go down the bushes or go down with a bush hog. There's been no maintenance on Holland Heights. I pay just as many taxes as anybody else does, and I think that something should be starting to be done, being maintained, that road. There's absolutely no maintenance that goes on. And if you guys look back in your records, if you keep records on when roads are graded, you'll see that there's not been a grader on that road.
Yeah, but I don't think, maybe two years and then it was 50 years before that, too. I mean, it is only...
Yeah, well, times are changing. Times are changing.
Yeah, I mean, other than your guys' traffic in... Will these increase in there? I mean, the roads, yeah, so it's got a lot more traffic on it now than it...
There's no new houses in there.
Right, yeah, but I'm saying, previous to you moving down there and previous to... Because it was always a summer home for what's-her-face's before that became permanent, really.
Right, well, so anyways, so there's multitude of traffic in there, the road needs to be tended, and it's not being tended. And I'd really appreciate it if somebody put a little emphasis on putting that road... It's like during the wintertime, the road doesn't get plowed until like late. I mean, the truck goes by 14 times, it takes five minutes to go down and come back and go right through. I understand there's more important roads, but it's there, it's easy to get by, you're not going out of your way, you bang, bang, and come back and it's gone and done. It's... I need some maintenance on Holland Heights. First of all, I need a culvert, second of all, I need some road trimming, and third of all, I need some plowing. It's getting old, I'm paying my payments, I'm paying my taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. So noted.
What's the idea about putting a culvert in? How we gotta go about doing that?
Well, we'll look at it and definitely get back to you on it.
That's the most important.
Sounds like it. Any other discussion on that?
No, I think it needs to be looked at and, as long as they can be... I don't think, you know, it's tough to, without looking at it, saying anything more than that, but I'm not aware of anything right there. You're pretty familiar with that. You're not either, are you?
No. Was there originally a culvert there? Because I remember there was something there.
No, there's never been a culvert there.
Remember, there was always a drop-off right on before you...
There's on the south side of the, no, Holland Heights, there's a two-foot drop-off, so there wasn't like there's gonna be any problems with that discharge.
Right, I remember something being...
I was thinking that originally, too. Like 40 years ago, that there was one.
Yeah, there was something right there.
I was thinking that, but I didn't want... I didn't know if they pulled it at some point or something.
Well, I've took care of that entrance for the last 20 years and there's never been a culvert there.
Yeah, but we were... He was, I think, a firm back, probably 40 years ago. Yeah.
40 years ago, we should have replaced the culvert by then.
Okay, so we'll move on to the Planning Commission report, which Shelley is not here this evening, but Andrea has offered to represent the Planning Commission.
Yes, and I wasn't at the meeting where they typed up this report, but there's a standard format that kinda needs to be followed, and that's what we followed by, was just inserting that proper information about the land designation change. And we were all in agreement of support of moving forward with the designation change on the map. So our next step was to hand it over to you guys to...
Say that again?
And just our next step was to present it to you guys and to...
Right. What were the changes on the map?
So... So, it would just be changing... This area right now is designated as...
Forest and... Forest and ag?
Yeah, we're all forest and ag. And then, so on the town plan, there's a map that has all the different designations and the proposal from Bullock's and Brad was to change this to commercial industrial.
Okay.
Yep.
And then we had hosted a hearing and heard from the town and...
So, I would entertain a motion to accept the town plan amendment offered by the Planning Commission.
I'll make the motion to accept it.
I will second that.
Okay, the motion is made and seconded. Is there discussion?
Obviously, I'll be recusing from the vote, which I don't know if it's necessary to actually say that.
Well, I think it's a good thing to say, and I think it's a good thing to record in the minutes.
I just have a question.
Yes.
Your motion is to accept this amendment, but it's pending another public hearing, right?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, just wanted to be clear.
And that will be the next part of this, part of the meeting.
Okay.
So, all those in favor of accepting the amendment to the map, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Me.
Motion has carried. So now, the next thing would be to set a date for a public hearing, which is required under 24 VSA subsection 4384.
And my next question is, is there a set amount of time required to warn such public hearing?
30 days, I believe.
30 days.
The July meeting is too close to make the numbers. So, the August meeting? Or do you want to do a special one?
No, I personally don't want to do a special one and...
So, that would be, is it?
It'd be August 8th.
And when is primary day?
I don't know, it's not on my calendar, I can look. That'd be primary election.
Kim, can you look at that map right behind you and see if it says what primary day is?
August 3rd.
Either the 6th or the 13th.
Yeah, it says March 5th to August 13th.
Okay, so it's not going to be in conflict if we did it on the 8th prior to the... Prior to the Select Board meeting?
Hearing is gonna be?
Well, they haven't... I haven't heard a motion yet.
I'll make the motion that we have the hearing August 8th.
I will second that.
And, yes, at a time, exactly.
6:30.
Okay.
Was there a second?
Yes, I seconded.
Yes. Motion has been made and seconded to have the hearing on August 8th at 6:30 here in this room. And all those in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried, so we will get that advertised. I don't believe any other discussion on this matter is appropriate at this time, so we will move on to the Treasurer's Report. And... The Select Board has received a letter from the Town Treasurer, Jennifer Millard, dated June 12th, 2024. That states, "I have decided to resign from my position as Town Treasurer. I am willing to stay on until July 31st to help with the transition. Thank you for your support during my time with the town. Signed, Jennifer Millard." So, I will entertain a motion to accept this letter of resignation.
If we don't accept it, does that mean she has to stay?
Unfortunately, you can't make people do things they don't wanna do. And believe...
You try.
Believe me, I twisted her arm as hard as I could and she was really screaming, but wouldn't change her mind.
I'll begrudgingly make the motion.
Is there a second? Unfortunately. Okay. Motion is made and seconded. All those in favor of accepting the letter of resignation, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion is carried. So, the resignation creates a vacancy. The Select Board is obligated within 10 days to post notice of the vacancy in at least two public places in the town, in and near the town clerk's office. The Select Board must also forthwith, which means as soon as possible, appoint someone to fill the vacancy. So long as the minimum posting requirements are met, the Select Board can advertise the vacancy as widely as it chooses. There is no specified process for making the appointment. If it wants, the Select Board can solicit letters of interest and interview candidates, but it is not required. The Board is not required to post notice of the vacancy before making the appointment. The appointee serves until an election is had. This could be an election at a special town meeting called for that purpose, or it could wait until the regular town meeting in March. However, the Select Board is not obligated to call a special meeting. If no special meeting is held, the appointed treasurer will serve until the annual meeting in March 2025. Also, the Select Board must file a record of the appointment with the town clerk, who must report it in the Book of Town Records. So, how would you like to proceed, gentlemen?
Well, obviously, we gotta post the vacancy.
We have to post the vacancy.
I guess my only concern is if we're gonna find anyone which is customary to take over before an actual audit is done, as we've done in the past when other Treasurers have moved on. Because they're gonna wanna make sure that the, everything is cleared before we actually... They take over, I would think, would make sense.
Well, I think that between now and July 31st, we probably don't have a very good chance of something...
I'm not the one that came up with July 31st, I'm just saying.
Well, she clearly says July 31st, she's no longer here, so...
Well, let's post the vacancy and, I mean, I... I mean, we have... Who do we have for internal auditors?
For internal auditors, we have Maureen Staples, Pam Giotti, and Lana Burton.
I mean, I guess as long as they've cleared everything, I would think that we don't need to go to a third party.
No, I don't think so either. I mean, they can go over and...
And, you know, you have your end of the year closeout coming up now.
Well, that's the thing. Yeah, we've gotta... Yeah, I guess, post our...
We have to post the notice. Do you want to advertise for letters of interest, or do you wanna go beat the bushes? How would you like to proceed?
What'd we get last time? Four?
I thought we had two.
Well, we had Jen, Matt. There was another one.
Maureen.
Maureen. And there wasn't a fourth?
I don't remember a fourth, I remember Maureen.
Matt and Jen, yeah.
Okay.
Has there been any interest, or have we...
This is just breaking news. I'd say we do the postings on buildings, plus put it in like the Volendale for now.
Well, how about the Manchester Journal, or yeah, the Manchester Journal, which is our official.
Well, then the Manchester Journal.
And our website.
Does just about everybody get the guide? Not everybody gets the journal.
I haven't, well, yeah, the problem with the guide is they're on this funky new
Well, we gotta put a date that we want to happen by, which would be our July meeting, I would assume.
Right.
And I would hope that we could appoint somebody at our July meeting.
I
That would be the 11th. Oops.
Yeah, it would Anything that we put on our website automatically goes to front porch.
Then I would say we do our postings and say that we would like them for our July meeting, we'd like to appoint. Does that sound?
Yeah, that way it gives a little time for them to, you know, kind of transition just around.
Yeah, it only gives like two weeks.
Yeah.
But it's better than nothing.
That's better than nothing at all.
If you get somebody who steps up and wants to do it.
I'm sure we can, I mean, for 30 grand, I think we should be
Well, and this is another thing that we might want to reconsider.
Lower our raise. But like Mike said, we might have a hard time getting some.
Personally, I think that $30,000 a year plus benefits is a pretty good deal for two days.
Well, that's why I was saying, you know, I would think we'd get a lot of people wanting it. But let's just go with our posting and we'll discuss
Letters of interest, aye.
Throw it out there in July 11th.
And come July, and then the candidate we pick, we'll discuss with them what we
Exactly.
Yep, all right.
Okay, so I don't think we actually need a motion on that, but that's
It's just following procedure, you know.
Well, okay, Mike is not here, so we don't have any information on the ARPA estimates that he was going to get. Ken, did you have anything to add on that?
I do not.
And then we'll move to the road commissioner's report.
Report on dump day?
We did, yes. When we set the agenda, we crossed that off and replaced it with resignation. We don't have all of the bills from dump day yet, so it's
I'm sure it wasn't profitable.
No, it never is, but it's, it's nice to know how unprofitable it truly was.
Gets it from being thrown over the edge of the road.
Right.
I can tell you, we took 64 tires to Rottland.
Well, it's quite a lot.
Was it that many?
Yeah, 64 tires.
Okay, so you had nothing else on ARPA, Ken?
I do not.
So then we'll move to the road commissioner's report.
Well, we're finishing out our year. I didn't get a chance to see if we had actually anything left that we could spend. Did you, Steve?
I haven't gone over the budget. Yeah, I know we have no gravel left.
But we're gonna be opening up our, our new year and our customary same stuff is tree cutting, ditching, and culverts. Do you have any timeframe on the new year culverts yet?
We're putting four culverts in next week. We have two on Blood Street, we're doing one on Danby Mountain, and one on Calvin Hill that we've patched three times this winter.
Oh, the one
Right by Victor's.
Yep.
Yeah, and we're going to remove one by Charlie Yupyups and replace the one that's actually in the low part of the road between him and Chad Berkler's. So we can get that ditch to drain there. And then there's one just below where Mike Blair used to be that we're resetting 10 inches deeper, so it'll actually drain the ditch now. Uh, we've been ditching on Baker Brook, Danby Mountain, and Keeler Road and and we started mowing on the blacktop, but that's been a fill-in job.
Steve and I had discussed, and I don't know if, if we could find a temporary person to run the roadside mower.
Yeah, I think
Someone who's mowed a lot of hay in his life and has a lot of time. Would prefer around 60 years old.
No, maybe.
And also clean out the, under the guardrails, so we're blacking.
So, I mean, I don't know where we find these people, but we, I don't know if we should.
I know we've have gotten one job application from somebody that wants to just sit in that tractor. But we need to discuss it. Because I know the person does not have a driver's license. I don't know if the insurance company would be okay with that because it's a tractor, or not okay with it because you're on the road.
It's a good question.
I mean, it's somebody that I think is capable of doing the job, it's just a matter of whether we can actually get insurance on them or not.
We should probably find out if that's possible, because it's not like we have a lot of people beating down the door to brush hog.
Well, that's a simple enough phone call for one of you to make to VLCT and just ask the question.
Wouldn't the insurance policy have that in it?
Probably not. They would that they would cover somebody who doesn't have a license, it probably wouldn't say it in the policy. It would easier to reach out to them and
Yeah, I'd certainly like to hear it from the horse's mouth.
Can we add to our advertisement that we're looking for a part-time person as long as we're gonna be
We have advertised it.
Just not
We've advertised for a full-time position plus a on-call person to do part-time work.
Had the one person.
So far, I've only had one person. And I've actually handed job applications to three other people that my own kid said, "I don't want to work for the town." I don't know if it's he didn't want to work for me, or if he didn't want to work for the town, but he didn't want to fill out the job application, so I gave it to a couple other people that said they were gonna fill it out for this meeting and nothing. So for whatever reason, nobody wants to sit in that tractor and mow road sides. It's not a hard job. It's a boring job, but it's not hard. And
Other than dodging cars when they're coming at you.
I've had more issues with retail posts than I have cars, so fortunately, the one I hit the other day was an old one that's not in use anymore.
Definitely not in use anymore now.
It's definitely not being used now, no. Topper wires everywhere.
So are you looking for a motion to employ a part-time worker to mow roads, to maintain road sides?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think we should, if you want to put it in a motion, I mean, we, we definitely need to, because what's gonna happen is we're gonna either get behind, or they're gonna get behind on their other projects.
Yeah, and the poison parsnip's coming right up, so let's get her done.
You know, and even if it's more than just the you know, just the mowing, I mean, you guys can probably use an extra hand.
Right, 'cause the other day I could have put somebody in the one-ton pickup and we're ditching. It would be nice to have an extra person working, but if we could get somebody to concentrate on mowing would be good, because it's just getting behind. The other thing, and I'm not looking for any I haven't looked for any prices and don't know if we can afford to or not. I wondered about getting a three-point hitched disc mower for that tractor. So we could take a first pass. I, I think with the right mower, we could do all of the blacktop in one day with a six to eight-foot width cut. Get one pass off it in a day rather than I've got right now, I'm crowding 12 hours to do North Main Cascades, the Brook Road, and Timmish Line as far as Chet McClellan's. Two passes with the Sidehog, which is only giving you about eight foot. I think if we were to get a three-point hitched disc mower that was eight foot wide, there's places that you're not gonna get it because of ledge or trees, but some of these wider places, you could just walk right down through knocking the grass over.
The only problem with the disc mower is, like you said, the ledge, the trees. And when we hit with those, they don't usually take it as well as the brush hog. I mean, they do a great job, you're right.
They do a great job and they're a lot faster.
And yes, and the only concern is are, are roads in good enough shape with enough not rocks and stuff where
They are kind of, they're pretty forgiving though, when you when you're mowing with them.
Well, and I think if we were to set it up so to actually tip the cutter head back a little bit.
Oh, your garage would bounce, yeah.
It would ride over rocks a little higher. It might not cut as low as you would like me to be cutting it, but it would get the height knocked down and you know, I think that's something that if we were to get it, depending on who we hired, it would be a machine that either me or Larry would run. That if we had somebody young or inexperienced, we'd just leave them with the Sidehog and and once you get your first pass done, most places you wouldn't be able to use it the second time. But we could cover a lot more ground quickly with it.
Now, the thing is, right now, our PTO and three-point is open. But doesn't our boom have a saddle on the back?
Yep. No, not on the back, on, it's under the belly.
When that, when, when, when we're going down the road?
So what we did at the beginning of the season and I put the ditch mower on the three-point hitch.
The one that came off the Coyote?
The one that came off the Coyote. When we store the tractor in the winter, we take the mower head completely off the boom and hook the hydraulic hose in a loop so that we're not losing oil and it can run without issues. What we did this spring is we put the, the three-point hitch mower on that tractor because the way it mounts, it's a faster mower than the boom mower, because as the boom settles or the ground changes, you're always playing with the levers and you've gotta go slower. With the three-point hitch one, you kick it in the float and you just drive. But when that was repaired the last time, the person that did it apparently didn't know that the baron housings were not two-piece baron housings, and they put barons into broken housings and the barons fell out.
So you're saying that needs barons?
I've ordered barons for it, they're down in Salem Farm Supply right now. And housings, because like I said, it's not a two-piece housing, it's a one-piece housing.
Those are pillow block style, aren't they?
Yep.
But that's probably twice as fast as using the boom, but
It's not twice as fast, no. But it is faster.
Okay. And how much faster would we be with a disc, though?
I mean, the difference is, my first pass with the the Sidehog, I'm in B2. My second, I'm in B1. With the other mower, with the boom mower, it's B1, and depending on where I'm at, it's A3. A disc mower, I would think we could jump it up into C1, B3. Depending on where you are on the road.
But do you think we're gaining what we need and with, with, when we've already got the other one?
Well, I wanted to mention it if I didn't think
No, I'm just, it's 'cause what's a disc mower gonna be?
I have not looked in it, 'cause I wanted to see what everybody thought, but I'm thinking it's probably gonna be 12,000 to 15,000. I mean, obviously, we can just stay with what we've got and it's still just a fill-in job, or I told Larry if he wanted overtime on some Friday when we're not working, if he wanted to jump in the tractor, he could.
Do you have the overtime available in the budget?
We don't have a third person, so we can use their budget.
Yeah, no, I guess you're right, we can use up some of that.
I mean, it's unfortunately, with two of us, it's we've either gotta concentrate on projects or mowing. We can't do both. Unless we're gonna start spending overtime.
Right.
And then of course
You're, you're right. I mean, we, we have the second, or the third guy's money, as long as we don't go beyond
Right.
using that, we're basically staying right in our budget, no.
Before we commit to spending any money, one of the things that we have to decide is how we're going to pay for this new truck. She needs she wants to decide which accounts should be charged, because we have $256,000 to come up with, and there's $222,000 in the equipment reserve account.
I guess we would take our 222, and we're gonna have to take, what's the difference out of our ARPA or something? I mean, unless you have another account hidden somewhere. I think that goes to the, we had that in there, but our trailer took
Right.
the thing that
Probably be a good idea to have a motion to that effect, to take the the balance of the money out of the ARPA money.
I'll make the motion that we take $34,273.27 out of the ARPA.
Hang on a minute, we have a discrepancy. Tom's probably right. 256, 572.25 less 222, 303.98. less two-twenty-two, three-oh-three point nine-eight.
Thirty-four, two, six, eight, twenty-seven. I came up at that time. What'd you get?
Thirty-four thousand, two, six, eight, twenty-seven.
Yep.
Okay, so who made the motion?
I did.
Are you seconding it?
I'm seconding it.
Okay, so motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, did you wanna talk more about making that other purchase?
Well, I think we're out of money from our equipment fund. I'm not sure.
We're out of money and we really can't discuss purchasing anything until we had three quotes anyhow, but if we're out of money.
That pretty well answers.
Pretty much answers the question that we'll just continue on the way we are.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think you had a good idea. I just didn't realize that our other mower was down, the one with the.
Yeah, 'cause that's what we started with and it was working good. And then all of a sudden, it started making a noise and I got out and looked and I said to Larry, you know, I didn't, it didn't look right to me. The pillow blocks for the barons always looked like they were two-piece and I'd never seen it before.
Yeah.
And it's like, okay, whatever. I've never dealt with that mower before and it was put together and never used, you know, when the new barons were put in it. They got put together, got parked up there, and we decided we were gonna try it this year. And it was working great right up until the barons fell out of it. And so like I said, I've ordered the new parts. They're down in Salem. They left a message Tuesday, but I wasn't here yesterday or today, so. And Larry had other things to do yesterday for getting us ready for this week and he had a couple repairs on the west side he had to get done before the weekend.
I have a person here asking, could you please repeat the last motion because they couldn't hear it?
Uh, the last motion was to spend thirty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents from the ARPA funds to, um, complete the payment for the new truck. So then I guess we'll move to the fleet permit approval. I'll show something else. Okay, so a motion to approve a fleet permit for BK Services LLC.
I'll make the motion.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, then the next item on the agenda is the sheriff's contract renewal. And I will tell you that I am not very happy with the services or the billing for this. We get the monthly bill and it tells how many hours, but it doesn't say what they did in those hours and I'd like to know that information.
Now, in the past, they used to give us somewhat of a report. Have you reached out to David?
I have not had a chance to and I've been meaning to, but.
I think that would probably go a long ways.
Oh, I know, and I, I had all good intentions of doing that. So I don't know if you wanna act on it now or you wanna, um.
When's it due?
June thirtieth.
Well, we probably oughta, and did he go up on his rates?
Yes.
How much?
Uh, I'm not sure how much, but he's now getting fifty-two dollars and forty-three cents an hour. And he had told us um, in a letter back at budget time that they were going up fourteen percent, so that's why I'm saying yes. And the department reserves the right to renegotiate cruiser fuel costs if it goes up, uh, if gas prices go up to more than three dollars and fifty cents a gallon.
How many hours are they serving now per week? Or supposed to be?
Fourteen hours per week. I mean, I guess we got a couple things. We we only spent about sixty percent of our budget that we had available for our sheriff. So we need to figure out if he's gonna actually, if we're gonna increase anything. I mean, is, was fourteen hours what we originally had or was that an increase?
That was an increase.
It was ten.
Yeah, it started as ten. I thought we went to twelve for a while and then to fourteen.
And I have to also say I've had a lot of inquiries. I'm not gonna go as far as saying complaints, but they certainly bordered on that about, you know, where's the sheriff? We don't see the sheriff.
Well, I think that's the thing is, is, yeah, no, I mean, I, I think we definitely need David to explain to us why we're not getting the written reports and, I mean, I'm not sure if the Four Corners guys are seeing them still or if, I mean, you're up that way. Steve, do you ever see?
I've seen them once last month.
Yeah, they've pretty much been a ghost.
And I've, a couple days I've. I've seen them at some very late hours after dark sitting, for instance, in Nichols Store Parking Lot and that's not when the speeding happens.
I guess my only concern is we really need to get the reports on what they're doing. Because saying I'm here, okay, great. Where were you sitting? What were you doing? At least that way, if you tell us where you are, then at least we can say, okay, they've been working the west side. They've had a lot of complaints or they've got a speeder up on, um, what's that road you're? Yeah, no, I, 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 my concern is more the reports than because none of us have seen them and obviously they've been patrolling. But, I mean, we need the sheriff's coverage. I, I mean, I guess if we were not gonna negotiate with them, we should've had other alternatives because.
Right, but if we have a report of what they're doing, we, we can always say, you know, we have a complaint. Well, there's been an issue on this road and that's where they've been.
Right, we have justification.
Right.
Yeah. I think we definitely need to address that part of it. I mean, I'm good with the contract. I'll make a motion that we sign the contract, but I would like David to explain to us what, why we're not getting the reports. So why don't you?
No.
I'll second Tom's motion.
Hi, motion's made and seconded. Any other discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Good. And is there any old business? For new business, I have been asked by the town clerk who received notice from the, um, Secretary of State's office that, um, ballots are being printed and will be delivered to all offices no later than Friday, June twenty-eighth for the primary election in August. The state is not mailing them out to everybody on the checklist. And the question from the town clerk is, do we want to mail them to everybody on the checklist? Or do we want to only provide them to people that request absentee ballots, which has been the traditional way of doing it?
I make the motion that we, um, only send them to people that request them.
I will second that.
Any other discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Any other new business? In that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion, will you adjourn?
Very good. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.